Hello, welcome everyone to this third session of our review of the Comprehensive Plan and Community Input. We'd like to thank the West Park Baptist Church for hosting us this evening, for allowing us to use their hall here to meet. Thank you very much. Tonight's topic is a little bit less about policy than the last two weeks have been, and it's a little bit more about infrastructure and capital improvement planning. Tonight's topic is about water and wastewater. And so, we're either going to go ahead and jump into it unless anyone has any questions to start. All right. So, a lot of what's in your package, again, for those of you that have been here the last two weeks, you know that this is a boiled down version of the Comprehensive Plan. This is probably about a quarter of the length of what these two actual chapters are. It also does not include... I'm going to have to turn that off, otherwise it's going to take up on the mic. It does not include the reference to the capital improvement projects, which are in the full-length Comprehensive Plan as an addendum at the end... or appendix, not an addendum, I'm sorry. It's an appendix at the end. And you can find that document on the city's website, www.pacos tx.gov, if you want to read the entire version of the Comprehensive Plan. One of the things that I found very interesting in reading this and reviewing this is that it states that eighty-seven percent of the city's water lines are original. And what that means is that whenever new neighborhoods were built, they put in those water lines. They haven't been replaced since. And so, if you look at some of the age of neighborhoods in Pecos, that means that a lot of our infrastructure is older. The typical time that you would expect a pipe to... the lifespan of a pipe is about fifty years for both water and sewer. And so, we're coming up on, if not well past, the time of... excuse me, just a second. Thank you. We're either at or well past the time that we would expect all this infrastructure to be failing on us. And we're starting to see that. We see a lot of breaks out in our system. We see a lot of water loss, which is something that we'll touch on here in just a few minutes as well. And that means that we've got to find a way forward to replace those lines and keep people in service. Just because they're old does not mean that they pose any kind of threat or health hazard to our citizens. You'll notice in the report that the TCEQ considers us a superior water quality system, which means that we've got good water coming out. We're very fortunate that the water that comes out of the well field, we touch it with some chlorine, and that's about all the treatment that it requires because it's very high-quality water. And so, there should be no concerns about the water that we're producing or that's coming through the pipes. It's just, the pipes are old, they're going to break. And that means more maintenance and more costs of our personnel. One thing that you'll notice is that since 1985, the majority of the projects that we've undertaken for the water system have all been grant projects. And they're only every couple of years. They're competitive, which means that we're up against all the other cities in the state. And we have not been replacing our lines. Again, only thirteen percent of our lines have been replaced in the last couple of years, which means that we've got way more than we need to do than what we've done so far. If you continue on, you'll find in the handout that we've got a synopsis of what's required by the state for the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and what we provide. And in all categories, we are well above what's required as the minimum. And so, that is a good sign, again, that we have a healthy system, even though it is aging. And again, we beat all the criteria that are set forth by the state. If you move on, in addition to being older, we also have an additional issue with our water system. Anything smaller than a four-inch water line makes it very difficult to provide fire flows. And when you're designing a water system, fire flows more often than not is the criteria that governs. It's not how many connections you have. It's not about pressure. It's almost always fire flow, that ability to have enough pressure and enough volume at your hydrants in order to meet the requirements for fire. And Pecos is a little bit in the hole in that aspect because between the two-inch and smaller, which are not sized appropriately for fire flow, that makes up about thirteen percent of our system. Four-inch and smaller makes up an additional eighteen percent. And so, we are already adding up a third, or thirty percent, of our system that is undersized for fire flow. And so, that's one of the major undertakings that we're going to need to do. I've been asked, "Why don't we have hydrants in various places around town?" And the answer is, "Because we don't have the pipe size to feed those hydrants." So, it doesn't do any good to have them out there just to have them out there. We actually need to upsize the lines that run to them. And so, we've got two challenges. One is that they're old. The second one is that a lot of them are undersized, at least a third of them. On the good news side, we have lots of elevated storage. We've got good pressure in almost all places in town. If you live in a neighborhood that doesn't have good pressure, please let us know because it means that we need to find a valve or someone that's keeping the water from flowing the right way. It makes mention that we have capacity for growth, which is going to be very crucial. As you may recall from some of our previous conversations, over the next ten to twenty years, we're expecting about fourteen to fifteen percent growth in our population. We have adequate water supply to cover that. One of the challenges that we're having that's not addressed in this plan is with the recent expansion of oil field, some of those levels have dropped dramatically in our well field, which means that we've got to make sure that we're being conservation-minded in our use. And there's an entire section in the Comprehensive Plan that talks about our requirements to do that. We're also required by state law to have conservation and drought contingencies in our local ordinances, which we have complied with that. We've been very fortunate that we really had to apply them, but we have them in case we do. Again, there's an entire conversation on fire and how that governs. There is a discussion on our revenues. And this is something that the city council is taking very seriously and that we are currently reviewing once again with our updated financials in order to know our cost of service and our future capital improvement project needs. One of the comments that I will make on the capital improvement side of things, if you look in that appendix, is that it's got a lot of projects in there, but it is by no means an extensive, all-out list. We are currently undertaking a separate water system study where they are modeling our system and coming up with capital improvement projects. And that will be the guiding document that we'll use for determining those capital improvement projects because it will be a much more complete list of our needs based off of that model. One of the things that we do need to overcome is our water loss. An acceptable water loss is between six and eleven percent. Anyone want to guess what we come in at? We're more than double. We're at almost twenty-six percent. And so, that is definitely something that we've got to work on. One of the things that we struggle with here is with the limestone that we have in the area. Water doesn't come up. It goes down, it dissolves the limestone. We never see the water. We never see the evidence of the leak. And so, that's something that we struggle with. So, we're probably going to have to look at some sort of compact leak detection system that allows to detect when we have those breaks because you don't see this oasis in the desert where all of a sudden things are trying to grow like you would normally see in an area with a pipe burst. And so, water loss is one of the major undertakings that we need to do. Again, some of that is quite possibly due to the age of our system. Leaks at the joints. It may not be that the pipe itself is broken. It's just at the joints, we've got leaks. We have known leaks where there's either damage due to excavation or because of age. That's just the reality of having a water system. And any other number of unaccounted things. We work very diligently to keep all of the unauthorized paths off of our line. Those people that might connect to our line and not tell us. We work very hard to keep them off and keep everyone honest so that we're not paying for free riders. But, again, this is something that we struggle with and that we're going to have to work towards. Next, you see the regional drought planning that I discussed earlier. We are compliant with everything that's required by the state. And we've been fortunate that we haven't had to implement a lot of those measures. But that doesn't mean that we will always be fortunate. We are in the middle of the desert. Drought is a reality. And it's just a matter of when, not if. Going through the prioritized problems, I'll just read those off. There's a new three, rehabilitate our aged storage tanks. And if you look just across 285, you'll see where we're currently painting one of our tanks. I know it's open on the logo today, so that's very exciting. And so, that's something that we have already started to undertake. Last year, we undertook the rehabilitation of one of our ground storage tanks, which went very well. So, we are already in the process of meeting that priority. The need to replace our water meters. We are currently in the process of that. They are about two-thirds to three-quarters of the way done. We expect them to be finished hopefully sometime mid-December. And that will allow us to do a couple of things to be more efficient. One is, we'll have new meters in the ground which read more accurately. And number two, we'll actually be able to reduce our personnel that are out reading meters because this is a system that will actually send a radio signal all the way back to City Hall so that we're reading all of our meters in one central point. So, that'll cut down on our people that we haven't healed. It will also speed up the time between reading and sending out bills, which will make it easier for our customers to know when to expect to receive their bill. And so, there's a lot of efficiency that we're looking forward there. The next up, the prioritized problem is to extend the water line on County Road 118. And this is part of our preparation for the new baseball complex, which is underway. If anyone's been by there, it's beautiful. It's got about four fields up with the turf, and it's green out in the middle of the desert. I call it the oasis. It looks beautiful. And that's going to be a Class A facility. So, the water line for that is already underway. The design of that was also in preparation for the entire six-hundred-acre basin that it would serve for both water and sewer. And so, we are already making progress on that. Number four, which is going to be an expensive undertaking but very important. If anyone remembers about two years ago when we lost our power out of the well field, that we had to go on to some of our drought restrictions and ask people to minimize how often they were flushing the commode or watering the lawn. And that wasn't fun. But one of the ways that it recommends that we combat that is to install generators. And so, what we will likely do is to install the panels at each of our pump stations and use a portable generator to keep the costs down. In that way, we can just move around each area, pump water through there, and keep us stocked up here in town. Some of the goals and objectives, and again, this is much less policy than the other chapters that we discussed. This is more common sense, how you run your system. And the first goal is pretty obvious, but it's stated because we need to keep it at the forefront. And that's that we need to keep our local system operating efficiently and cost-effectively. Hopefully, you all recognize that we are trying to keep it cost-effective and we are trying to keep it up-to-date because it's much cheaper to maintain a system than it is to replace one. Goal number two is to have clean, safe, potable water. We have this as a moral and ethical obligation in addition to being a legal one, one that we take seriously. And hopefully, everyone enjoys and appreciates having water come out of the stuff whenever you turn it on. I'm certainly glad I don't have to go in the backyard and pump in order to get some water. Number three is customers have access to sustainable water supply that provides sufficient pressure and fire protection, particularly in kinds of drought. This is also a goal that we were already undertaking. We're looking at how we can expand our well field and what new water supplies we can find. So, we are in good hands on that goal as well. Goal number four is to maintain acceptable levels of functionality during and after disruptive events and efficiently recover full functionality after a hazard event. This is something that we need to have more focus on. Again, it's not just the generators, but it's our entire approach to hazards, threats, and dangers of those. Overall, it sums up our system rehabilitation. And then, we need to take care of our elevated and ground storage. We need to take care of our pipes. We need to make sure that we continue to produce clean, safe, potable water. So, I think those are goals that just about everyone can agree are important as they say, our water is what sustains life. And so, it's pretty important. Going through the implementation plan, again, it's pretty much the same thing. We need to replace our lines that are undersized and aged. We need to make sure that we're being compliant with TCEQ and that we're applying in the most cost-effective way. And we need to make sure that we have water well into the future. As some of you may know, this is this oil boom, even though it's not booming quite right now, we expect it to come back and we expect it to be here for the next fifty years. Which means that we need to have water supply for ourselves, for the oil field, and for generations to come for at least fifty years. My hope is that Pecos is established enough in that time period that will go well beyond that with our population boom. And so, we've got to have an eye not just into this year or next year, but ten years, twenty, fifty, a hundred years from now to make sure that we still have a good water supply and that we can continue to live in a city that will love. Any questions on water distribution? I know, exciting stuff. Someone might claim water?
I have one.
We have a question.
On the new plan that's coming out and the development that we're getting done for capital, for the water line reassessment that we're getting done, is it going to have a recommendation on timelines, on what pieces should be done first to give us some type of protocol that we're going to look at, or is it going to be a respond and do what we can on those things?
So, it will have a priority matrix, which means that depending on where it falls in category of criticality... I don't remember all the criteria, but criticality is one of them. Funding always comes into that because you can't do more than what you have money for. But it's going to propose that we do those things that are going to have the highest impact to the system. And that may or may not include growth, but it will definitely include replacement of existing infrastructure.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions on our water system? All right. We'll move on to wastewater then. Very similar. A lot of our infrastructure over the last couple of years has only been installed when we received grants. We have done a few projects of lakes through bond money that I believe was taken down in around 2015. But we all know that that money did not go very far just because there are so many needs. Similar to the water, a lot of our wastewater system is aged. A lot of it was put in in the 1950s when the base was still going strong. We'll get to the end of the slide there. Where we saw most of the growth in Pecos, especially going to the south, towards the base, the old airport. And so, similar to our water system, we have pipe in the ground that is now seventy years old. We expect it to last about fifty years. And so, we're already twenty years past its expected lifespan, which means that we've got to at least get caught up so that we're only fifty years behind instead of seventy. And that is not a cheap undertaking either. One of the things that impacts wastewater, no matter where you are at, is inflow and infiltration. We're very fortunate, in a sense, that we don't have a lot of rain here. I've previously served in a city where we had about forty-eight inches of rain every year, and it seemed to come all at once. And when it did, our wastewater plant tripled or quadrupled in how much water was going through it. We had a lot of INI. We're not quite that dramatic here, but we do have a very high groundwater table. And so, we have groundwater that hits into our system, which causes us to treat more water than what's actually being flushed in our houses. And so, we still have INI. And all INI is that water is coming from outside the system into the pipes and being conveyed toward our wastewater treatment plant. And so, very similar to our water, we have pipes that are old. They may be cracked. They may have openings at the joints. There's any number of reasons for INI. There are new technologies, which are typically called trenchless technologies, which are things that we're going to explore to prevent us from having to dig up our streets, having a big mess all over town. But it's not applicable in all situations. And so, new technology will have to be part of our approach to INI. We don't have any substantial industrial contributors. We have a lot of industrial uses around here. They're almost all well field-related. But we don't have manufacturing. We don't have companies that are introducing what are called slugs of chemicals. And what a slug is, is they basically dump a super-high dose of a chemical into the wastewater system and it goes through, which is all fine and good, but a wastewater plant works off of bugs that eat and compost all the material that is coming in. And those slugs come in and they kill all the little bugs. And so, you kind of have to start raising a new generation of bugs. We're fortunate that we don't have that, but we also hope to bring in some of that manufacturing, bring in some of those jobs, which means that we need to be prepared for it. One of the things that we are already doing as a city is we're undertaking the design work for a wastewater treatment plant expansion. That allows us to meet the TCEQ's seventy-five to ninety rule. What the seventy-five to ninety rule is, is that when you reach seventy-five percent of your plant's capacity, you need to start designing for an expansion. When you hit ninety percent of your plant's capacity, you need to be building your plant expansion. Well, we're just around about seventy-five percent. I think we're at seventy-three according to this. And that's also with the decrease that we've had in population over the last couple of months. And so, if we have that population come back in, it's very quick to get above that seventy-five percent. We are underway with that design. We are underway with trying to seek some low-interest funding from the state in order to pay for that, much cheaper than normal interest rates. Our system is made up of pipes, made up of lift stations, pumps, made up of the wastewater treatment plants. And a lot of it is chemistry. And so, we have operators out there taking care of that. Again, we are in compliance. We're very fortunate. But we do have to prepare for the future in growth and in taking care of our system. Going through some of the things that were identified, we need a new wastewater treatment plant. No surprise. We need to make it more resistant against natural disasters. We need generators for our lift stations. That way, sewer doesn't back up all the time. And we need to reduce INI. Very similar to the water side of things, we need to have an efficient wastewater system. We need to lower costs. We need to make sure that we are treating the sewage correctly, not only to comply with our permit, but also for the safety of everyone who might come in contact with, that has effluent water. We need to make sure that we're able to respond to disasters, both natural and environmental. We need to find funding, which we're in the process of. We also need to plan on a secondary expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, being taken into consideration at the same time so that it's not a surprise what the next step is going to be. There will be a trigger point in that expansion, which will have to do with our population, how quickly we use up the capacity under plant expansion. Again, if we see a fourteen percent increase, which I personally believe is going to be much higher over the next thirty years, we're probably going to move from phase one right into phase two. And that will have provided the capacity that we need for the next fifty years based off of our projections. We need to update our lift stations. We need to replace pipe. Again, it's all seventy years old. A lot of it is clay pipe. Clay pipe is great. It can last a very long time. One of the things that we are seeing though is with the fracking, one of the side effects is we have these mini-quakes. I don't know. Some I grew up in Southern California, so they're nothing to me. But some people tell me that, you know, it was a two-point-five. It's horrible. Which it is. In a region that may not have previously had that kind of seismic activity, a two-point-five is substantial. Especially when we're talking clay pipe. Clay pipe is a very rigid pipe. And as soon as you start shaking it, especially laterally, which is what happens in an earthquake, you start breaking that pipe. And so, the success of the region as an oil-producing area does come with its consequences for our sewer system. And we need to be conscious of that. And we need to have a plan to move forward, replacing our clay pipe with PVC pipe. Again, we're in compliance. It's just we have quite a bit of work to do. Similarly, we are working on a master plan for our wastewater system. If you look at the implementation plan, they do introduce some of the projects that need to be taken with cost estimates. And there's quite a bit of money, even in these two things that they mentioned. This is by no means a full list. The full list is probably going to be on the scale of a couple hundred million dollars worth of projects. Again, we have an aging infrastructure. I know one of the topics that's been discussed out in the public and the timing could not have been worse on the city's side of things is the rates that we pay for our water and sewer. And we realize that this is impacting our citizens, our businesses. And it was its bad time, given the loss of employment, COVID, the impact that that's had. Unfortunately, even though we're reviewing that and we'll be presenting to the council with new recommendations here in the next few months, the reality is that we have a mountain of work that needs to be done that we have to catch up on. It not only is meant to cover the cost of our daily maintenance, of our people, our chemicals, fixing those leaks, fixing those sewer vacuums, but it is that capital investment to be able to replace these pipes, doing that economic analysis to determine whether sewer pay cash or whether it's cheaper to take on debt. We do have debt in our system that is required to be paid off. And so, there's quite a bit that goes into this analysis. And even though we realize that it's impacting our citizens and they feel that they've got a high bill, there's a reason why it is that high. It's because there's a lot that needs to be done. I know that's kind of a contentious topic, but it's one that we're willing to address and willing to have a conversation with anyone that has those concerns. And so, we ask that, as we go through that process, that our citizens participate and give their feedback on our fee structures. Are there any questions on the wastewater side of things? Do you have anything on Facebook? If anyone logged in. No? All right. One wants going twice. If not, we will open it up to any questions about the community. We've got almost all of our department heads here who are willing and able to answer any questions that they might have. If they don't have the answer, we'll get back to them with the answer.
The water that we're pulling from wells, as a city, what's the life expectancy of that on current use and losses and inefficiencies and everything?
So, we have a good supply and we have a good quality of water. We actually have three different well fields. One of them is located in Worth County. And it is actually the lowest quality water that we have. And so, we actually have to mix it with our other water, our sweeter water. And I think we're limited to two to five percent of what can come out of Worth County. We have seen a dramatic drop in our remaining two well fields. We would expect it to drop to maybe three feet a year. We've seen it drop on a scale of ten to fifteen feet a year, which means that we've been pulling a lot more out than it's able to recharge. We think that's largely due to the oil field. It gives them their need for water for their process.
Do we have any numbers, something that are comparative? I mean, what we estimate the city's pulling for city stuff versus oil field?
We don't. And part of the reason that we don't is we don't have access to the state's database for the aquifer. We don't know what permits they allow or how much they're allowing to... We don't know what permits they allow or how much they're allowing to pull out. Also in Texas, whoever owns the surface owns the water. And so that also impacts it because a lot of these landowners have just allowed whoever's they're drilling to take their water as part of that. There is hope. A lot of the oil fields are looking at how they can recycle water. Some of them are even going so far as to have onsite recycling systems. And they're finding better ways to do the fracking and the pumping with fewer chemicals that require less water. And so they're making a lot of strides in the industry to improve that, but it's still going to take time for our system to recover. One of the things that we are doing to address that is we're actually looking for a fourth water source. We think we've identified what that source is, but it's going to be a process to get it, to get to water to town. It's about a thirty-mile stretch of pipe. And so these are not small projects. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you all for being here, and thank you again to the West Park Baptist Church for hosting us. Thank you all for making it to multiple meetings, it's been great to see you all. And we hope that you'll continue to participate, give us your comments, give us your questions, we'll try our best to answer them. We will be taking any comments that we receive from the public over the next month or so and taking those into consideration for the final draft of the comprehensive plan that we hope to present to council in December and January for the first and second readings. This is our plan moving forward for the next ten years. It is solid, it's a very well put together plan, has good recommendations in it. But it is what we're committing to. And so if there are any concerns in the public of how we would be using our resources, how we'd be exerting our forces, we ask, we beg, we plead that you submit those to City Hall so that we can take them into consideration before we make this our plan for the next ten years. If there's no more questions, thank you all for your time and have a good night.